All right, so let me, um, let me call our select board meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, April 24. The hour is now 7:03 PM. If I can invite everyone in the room to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good way to start. Thank you. Um, all right, we have a number of things here right out of the gate, so we'll, uh, we'll try to work through them. The first is, uh, at 7 o'clock, we have a, an order of taking related to easements for Pringle Street culvert replacement. And I see someone is rising, so you kind of, uh, you want to introduce yourself for the record, please, sir?
Andrew Stacktown, engineer.
Thanks, Andrew. Welcome.
Thank you.
You want to give us a brief background on this?
Sure, so, um, Pringle Street culvert at Collins Brook, there is an existing 36-inch corrugated metal pipe culvert there that is failing due to corrosion of the existing pipe. The existing outlet of that culvert is currently in a perched condition, meaning that the, the bottom of the outlet of the culvert sits about six inches above the water level grade. So this is causing further scarring of the stream bed down on the downstream side of the culvert. There's also existing utility constraints at this culvert location. We have a gravity sewer line that's directly beneath the existing culvert. We have an AC water main that's also below the culvert, and we have a, uh, national grid gas main above the culvert. So we're kind of in a tight spot both above and below, so we're limited in really what we can do to change the size or the elevation of the culvert. So we're looking to replace this culvert with a 42-inch wide by 29-inch tall aluminum arch culvert in order to avoid long-term shutdowns of Pringle Street, such as what we experienced on Pinnacle Street a couple of years ago. And, uh, also the emergency repairs that we needed to do on Bayberry Lane. The Pinnacle Street culvert required an eight-month shutdown of the roadway while we got the approvals for the permitting and, um, lead times for fabricating the culvert and the actual construction of the, the culvert. And that significantly impacted travel times and, uh, response times for emergency vehicles. So we're looking to be more proactive and, uh, get this culvert replaced on a more planned schedule versus, uh, on an emergency basis. The town hired VHB to design the replacement of this culvert. The replacement of the culvert was approved by the Conservation Commission in February of last year. Due to limitations in funding, uh, we haven't been able to construct it yet, but, uh, we're ready to go forward now. The proposed culvert does require permanent and temporary easements on both the upstream and downstream sides of the culvert. On the downstream side, a permanent easement is necessary due to the existing topography. And also, there's a transition area. Since we can't lower the pipe elevation of the culvert, there's going to be a transition that we need to, um, install to lower it from the, sort of, the perched elevation down to the existing stream, um, stream grade elevation. An appraisal of those easements was performed by A.M. Appraisals in February, uh, 2023. That's whatever questions you have.
Do you have any estimation on like the, uh, length of time start to finish once work starts?
Uh, I would expect it probably about, uh, let's say, two to four weeks, uh, to construct it.
Okay. All right. All right, do my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Stack?
I do.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Stack. I read your documentation in our packet and the letter from the homeowner that directly abuts and this easement would be on their property. Can you tell us why we're not pursuing, um, eminent domain for this?
We are pursuing eminent domain, so that, that is the, the eminent domain.
Because they seem to want eminent domain over just the easement.
But the eminent domain is for the taking of the easement.
Okay.
I think that's kind of the confusion where the confusion lies between the homeowner, uh, with homeowners. That eminent domain process is for the taking of that permanent eas- permanent and temporary easement.
Okay.
Without those easements, we can't construct this culvert.
Okay. Um, well, the, so then their concern was that the easement would mean that they would have some sort of liability in the case of the culvert failing or someone being injured in the structure or something like that. Is there any protection, um, for homeowners in a case like that? Can we talk about that?
The liability during construction would be on the, the town and the contractor.
Right.
Uh, after the construction is done, it, it, it sits with the homeowner.
It sits with the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's the concern that the homeowner has expressed to the board. Okay. All right, uh, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so I, I understand that, you know, from what, reading this, that, you know, we have a problem with drainage out there and that we need to, because of all the utilities that are around there, that you need to take an easement for this. Is all the runoff coming from the roadway or is it coming from private property? It's like, why is it like, you know, that we're having a problem with the existing culvert? Does it just can't hold the, what's there or is it something? Has there been new construction that now we get a lot more runoff that's going in there? Like, where is it all coming from?
The, the problem with the culvert is the material that the culvert is made of. Corrugated metal pipe is, it just corrodes over time. That pipe is severely corroded. I can pass around a picture if you'd like to see. See the perched condition of the culvert as well.
We've had some others in town that are very similar, right?
Yes.
Um, okay, thank you.
And when, when, when it corrodes, then the culvert fails and then it starts, uh, forming sinkholes in the roadway.
And there's no way of, like, jacking through and putting like something that feeding through that could replace that to?
It's in such a poor condition, it'd be, it'd be worth trying to salvage it.
So the new culvert that's going in, is it going to be an open trench or culvert? Or is it going to be the same type of thing? Is it going to be something where it's going to have a pipe that's going to go on the ground and then there's going to be material over it?
It's going to be similar style to this.
Yeah, so it's something that goes under and then it's just, so the drainage goes through.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, no, I'm just trying to figure out what, uh, we have flooding in areas. We don't want to have another problem. I understand if this thing collapses, it's going to cause damage to not just that property owner, but probably other property owners if we, if we have that area and we're away. What's going to happen to the existing culvert? Like, uh, is that going to be filled or are we going to wait for that to just settle and collapse? What are we doing with the?
We're, we're removing, we would remove it and replace it with the, with the new culvert.
Yeah, well, I thought we were taking the easement to move it next to it. I'm just, I was just.
No, it, it's, um, it's replacing it in its location, but it has to extend a little bit further beyond where the existing culvert, um, currently sits due to the transition from the perched condition down to the existing stream grade. So there's going to be some riprap, uh, on the downstream side, um, for that transition area.
Okay. Well, that, that's the curious, I mean, looking at it, I understand we have to replace it. But if we're replacing it, it, why does it have to be larger? Is it because of what's going in it or is it?
It, it's, it's not larger. It's, um, hydroically, it's the, the, what was it? The, uh, the 42-inch wide by 20, 29-inch tall, um, semi-elliptical culvert is equivalent to a 36-inch circular culvert.
Well, the, the, just trying to understand, we have a culvert that's out there.
Yeah.
We're replacing it almost in kind.
Yeah.
But yet we not need to take an easement and a permanent easement. So like, what is the, why do we need a permanent easement if it's going to be replaced similar in kind? Like, once we're done with the construction, why do we need a permanent easement?
Because where it's going, where the culvert is sitting, there are, there are no easements right now. So it's basically going to be an easement for the, where the culvert sits beyond our, the town's right of way.
Okay, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Mackey?
Uh, so I thought I was with you until that last answer you just gave. Can you walk me through that again? So the culvert is not an existing easement?
Correct.
Okay, so this easement is to essentially be able to do the work for the temporary easement and then the permanent easement is where what should have already had an easement before for the culvert? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Now he ends his. Okay, very good. Okay, um, I, I do want to note it was referenced, I think, by one of my colleagues, but we have a letter dated March 7th, um, from the McLennons at 2 Baldwin Street. We also have a letter dated April 10th, um, from, uh, the Lawrences of, um, 161 Pringle Street. And they are, um, in different sort of opinion on, uh, this particular matter. Are either of those parties present and if they are, do they want to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone here. So I wanted to give them an opportunity. If they were present, they took the time to correspond with the board. So, all right, um, this is not a public hearing. It's the board's discretion. I know that, um, the taking of land is obviously always of paramount concern to the board. There seems to be some public interest here that comes into.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could add, the, we're not taking the land. The land is still going to be the homeowner's land. It's just, we're taking an easement to basically occupy a portion of their.
Appreciate the clarification. So, um, nonetheless, we do take it very seriously. So let me, um, let me ask at this time if my colleagues have any motions they wish to offer.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the easement, um, for the repairs to this, uh, for the drainage instruction. I'll, I'll approve the order of taking easement for Pringle Street replacement project culvert.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Holland. And I'm, I'm naming names here so our recording secretary gets our records correct in the minutes. So the motion was made and seconded, um, to approve and execute the order of taking. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well. That will be recorded as a five to zero vote. I assume there's an original document somewhere that we will execute. Okay. Okay, let me move to, uh, thank you. Let me move to, um, our 710 item. This is, um, a transfer of liquor license for MB Spirits. And I welcome you to come forward. This is a public hearing. I will read the notice. Uh, that notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 138 on Tuesday, uh, April 25, which was now changed to Monday, April 24 at 7:00 PM on the application of MB Spirits LLC doing business as MB Spirits by Ronald T. Lambert, manager, to transfer an all-alcoholic beverage license from Mall Liquors, Inc., doing business as Lincoln Liquors, and to operate this license on said premises located at 10 Main Street, Tuxbury, Massachusetts, described as approximately 8,876 square feet of an on-ground level building, including entry and exit vestibule, retail sales area, storage room, and office. The hearing will be held, uh, at 1,009 Main Street, Tuxbury, Mass. We obviously welcome input from the public and, uh, recommended comments be submitted in writing, uh, prior to this hearing. So, um, let me, uh, welcome both of you gentlemen. And if you would do us a favor and just, um, introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure. Uh, thank you, members of the chairman, members of the board. My name is John Aida McDermott, Lieutenant Miller. Look today at 28th Street, Boston. With me is Ronald Lambert, the proposed manager of record.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Just briefly, um, if, if I may, um, so MB Spirits LLC, who's the applicant, is a wholly owned subsidiary of Demulla Supermarkets, Inc. And in this instance, they are the landlord at this location. The, um, current licensee, uh, Lincoln Liquors, was actually selling their store along with, I think, five or six other stores. And Demulla Supermarkets had a right of first refusal. They exercised that right, matched that offer, and we're in front of you today on that, uh, transfer. So in addition to the, uh, liquor license being transferred, they're also purchasing the existing business assets of that location. So what you'll see is a turnkey operation, really very minimal changes. Obviously, you're going to have rebranding and new ownership and management. But for the customers, for the most part, it'll be, uh, kind of business as usual. I'm not going to see any changes in that, in that, uh, and, and, you know, any large changes.
Excuse me, can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Thank you.
Um, by way of experience, Ronald Lambert, not only is he a lifelong resident of the town, but he has been with Demulla's for 49 years. He's part of the senior management and he'll be part of the transition team here. Uh, so he does have experience specifically relating to alcohol sales, mostly in New Hampshire. In Salem, New Hampshire. But again, having been part of the company for nearly five decades, he has, um, been involved in all aspects of it. So what happens usually generally when, uh, a store is taken over, whether it's a new store or an existing store? In this case, uh, existing MB Spirits puts in place a transition team. So they do all the hiring, um, to make sure everything is, get all the wrinkles worked out, and Ronald will be part of that. So what we do anticipate is when that has been accomplished, there will be another application, we'll be back in front of you for a permanent, uh, manager of record, um, at that time. So we just wanted to let you know and make you aware of that.
And I've been doing another 50 years there.
Um, and, and MB Spirits, they presently hold five, uh, licenses throughout the state. They have an exemplary record. There's no any, there's no history of any violations of any sorts. We really think that it's going to be, um, no issues, no concerns, and hopefully we're not in front of the board for that reason. So if you have any questions on myself or for Ronald, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, and I will note, um, extensively prepared and well-prepared, um, information for the board. So let me ask if my colleagues have specific questions they want to pose.
I have one.
Mr. Holland?
This license has nothing in abeyance right now, does it? I just want, make sure that they're informed that, you know, were they, before this board in the past two years, anything left in abeyance for selling to minors or anything?
I don't think so.
Or is it free and clear?
Not that I recall. I'm not aware of it. I ca, I wouldn't say definitively.
I'll have to double check that.
I just want the applicant to be aware that, because it doesn't start from zero again. It still hangs with the license, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, that's an ABCC question.
Yep, very good question. So we can double check that and if that's the case, we'll make sure the, um, applicant is informed when we finalize everything. Okay.
I've, I've had questions, sellers counsel. I mean, they informed me that there's no history of violations. And, and obviously it's the purview of this board, but traditionally, if there's a new ownership, it would start with that new ownership team. Certainly something if it's a problematic store and this same issue has happened, whether it's, you know, sales to minors, then we want to be aware of that and correct that issue. But to my knowledge, there's, there's no history of violations here.
Good. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, anyone else?
Yep, I got one.
Ms. Wellman?
Um, building on my colleague's, um, concern, we have had issues in the past in town with different, um, with a number of different organizations. And there are different ways that the businesses have chosen to, um, take precautions so that they aren't selling to minors. And so I was curious, what was your, um, proposal for that?
I can speak to that if you have other. Yeah, so as they've done in the past, they have a, um, pretty sophisticated POS system. And in addition to that, I believe generally they card everyone, but usually it's about 35, 40. They, they really do err on the side of caution and that's been successful. Um, yeah, it may annoy some people, but that's, that's why they have no violations. And, you know, the, the big thing is train staff. So all staff will be tip certified. Ron is tip certified. Make sure that everyone has that certification. They also do internal, uh, checks and their own training system as well. So they'll do their own compliance checks. They'll send people in, um, you know, not part of the town or the ABCC or anything like that. So they do their own compliance checks.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so in your point of sale system, you did the scan, the back of the ID?
They scan the ID and they have to verify it and they compare it to the person in front of them as well, so.
Okay, all right, great. All right, thank you, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one last question. So you're taking over total management. Is there, is this any existing staff remaining or is this a total bringing in all new staff?
Great question. So, um, at the present time, um, they're having conversations, um, with existing staff. They're going to open it up. Certainly can't make any promises, but I can say that they's willing to interview with everyone and meet, meet with them, with the existing staff. Not only at this store, I was told, at all the other stores as well, that, that, uh, Lincoln Liquors is closing. So not making any promises, but they're certainly having those conversations and be more than, um, happy to, to do that. And I, they have a couple of people in contact with one another to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay. All right, um, let me open this up. It's a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience who wants to offer comment on this particular request? All right, I don't see anyone rising, so, um, may I ask for a, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will make that a unanimous vote. And now on the question itself of the transfer of the all-alcoholic beverages package store license.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of license to MB Spirits LLC, DBA MB Spirits.
Second.
Okay, a motion was offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well. That will make it a five to nothing vote, so. Thank you both, gentlemen.
Appreciate the time, thank you.
All right, appreciate the time. Okay, that brings us to another public hearing, um, pertaining to National Grid petition, installation of underground facilities at Foster Lane. I will read the hearing notice. That, uh, notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, April 24, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, 1,009 Main Street in Tuxbury on the petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way in order to provide electric service to New Home on Foster Lane in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Foster Lane, Tuxbury, Massachusetts. And then if there were any questions regarding the permit, contact information was, uh, Mr. Vincent Logo Dice, um, at National Grid. We have a list of abuders that was notified. Looks like the notifications were mailed on, um, must be 4/7/2023. And I would like you, sir, if you don't mind, are you Mr. Logo Dice by chance?
No.
All right, would you please introduce yourself for the record?
How you doing? I'm Joe Antelli from National Grid Electric.
Thank you. Okay. So what do we need to know about this particular, um, request that you, um, have filed?
So there's, uh, new residents going in and, um, we're trying to help out the resident with a new primary line underground going to a transformer pad at his residence. It is quite far back, it's almost 1,100 feet back. So we needed to run primary because, uh, we had to get a transformer closer to his house or he wouldn't have any power.
Okay. Okay, do my colleagues have questions on this for, um, the representative from National Grid?
Uh, I just have one question. I, I see you're putting the existing pole that's out there. You've got, everything's going underground. Will the existing pole be removed once?
No, we're just, um, we're just connecting to the top of the pole for the primary and running it down and underground, so you won't see anything added to the area. It'd just be heavy-duty handholds which could be, um, driven over. So it'll be 100% protected. And there's two of them, one halfway through so we can pull it, then another one at the turn and then to the transformer. So you won't see anything from the road at all.
Thank you.
As far as visually, you know, for the other residents.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Ms. Wellman?
Um, thank you, Mr. Antelli. How long do you think it will take you to do this project?
Um, once we get approval and easements and petitions all going through.
Sure.
We, we could do it fast. I mean, we could do it, you know, two days of work.
Okay.
Right, and like, once everything's in. We're fast doing the work part, but to get in there.
The paperwork takes forever.
The paperwork takes a little while.
I hear you.
Right, but we know what we're doing once we get it, it's okay to go.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so let me ask if there's anyone in the audience who has comment, uh, concern about this mi, matter? And if you wouldn't mind, use that podium. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is David Plunkett. I live in the town of Tuxbury, 257 Fifth Street. I'm here representing tonight JDB Realty Trust, which is actually an owner of fee interest in the area shown as Foster Lane. Very first threshold question. In the application, they refer to this as a public way. It's not a public way. Foster Lane has never been taken for public purpose. It's never been dedicated for public purpose and is not a public way. So the very first issue for the National Grid to address hasn't been addressed. Is this a public way and when did it become a pa, public way? It can't be addressed because it's not a public way. The second issue is that this is, according to the plan, uh, for the purpose of providing electrical connection to that triangular, somewhat triangular, if I remember my geometry better, I'd tell you the correct four-sided rhombus or whatever it is, but it looks like a triangle. So that's what's commonly known as the twist lot. Uh, we have a history with this parcel of land. Mr. Chair, if I could hand out, uh, to the board, uh, copies of the decision from April 7, 1994, uh, from the appellate court in which the appeals court overturned the decision of the planning board in which they had given a, uh, permission to develop the twist lot. And the determination was that the twist lot was a stranger to the parcel of land that created Foster Lane and therefore they had absolutely no right to that parcel. And then the determination in the decision of the, uh, of the appeals court, they used the language about the Superior Court decision, the planning board decision, that they were clearly erroneous. And, Mr. Chair, you know, you, I know you appreciate the fact that when the appeals court uses language like that, that's a slap on the wrist telling them, how did you blow it like this? Clearly erroneous is the, is the language that they use. So with your permission, I would like to hand out, uh, these copies of the, that 1994 decision.
Mr. Holland, would you just grab those so we can pass those around?
Thank you.
Uh, should be noted that there, there's also ongoing activity relative to the fact that the building commissioner, uh, has made a determination that the twist lot is not a buildable lot. That's on appeal before the ZBA. There's a hearing coming up, uh, this coming Thursday in which the owner of that parcel is, uh, contesting the, uh, building commissioner's determination. And we have submitted something in support of a denial of the application, uh, saying that the building commissioner is correct relative to it not being a buildable lot. Our only issue with the building commissioner is that he talks about frontage and what he should be saying that has zero frontage because frontage is actual usable frontage. If he has no right of access to Foster Lane, then he has zero frontage, not 125 feet of frontage, zero frontage. Uh, there's also a pending matter, uh, in Superior Court in regards to a permit issued, uh, by the planning board for a, uh, land disturbance permit in which, uh, as part of the application, there was a submittal of a plan including this Foster Lane and the lot that's known again as the twist lot. At the, it, at the last hearing, the applicant then said, well, what I'll do is I'll withdraw this area shown as the twist, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Foster Lane and just give it to me for the parcel. And that's an appeal before the Superior Court because the land disturbance permit process clearly refers to the site to be disturbed. And clearly, from the plan that's submitted here, that Foster Lane is going to be disturbed. And, and there wasn't notice given to the abuders as it should have been. And... And despite the fact that was withdrawn, somehow heavy equipment has gone in there and leveled off that area. So take that for what it might. So bottom line is, it's not a public way. So that in and of itself is the end, should be the end of the discussion. Secondly, there's a Massachusetts appellate court decision which clearly says that the decision to grant them rights to use that were clearly erroneous and he's a stranger to the parcel, that he has no rights of access. And we have two pending actions right now pertaining to whether this is a buildable lot or not. And that's all I have to say. Would you request that the board deny this request, you know, on all those grounds as enunciated here tonight?
All right, thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else? Sir, either one of you have further comment?
I'm the owner of the property.
You want to stand up here? If you're going to speak to us, go ahead. Come on up here and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Kevin O'Brien. I am the applicant and I own the property at the end of the street, at the end of Foster Lane. But Mr. Plunkett just passed you out his, indeed, the appellate court's decision from 1994. What he keeps forgetting to tell everybody is, is I owned the property in 1985. 1984, 1994, which was nine years later, I did prevail at the appeals court. They overturned the town of Tewksbury's planning board's decision to cut the lot into two lots. I was subdividing the lot. That being said, they overturned that. I accepted that. They also said in their decision on page three that, absent such evidence, the defendant, this is the second line on the third page, the defendant could not have acquired an easement by prescription because the prescription period is 20 years. I owned that property already for 19, for nine years. His client didn't buy the property until 2012. I've owned the property at that point, doing the math, it's 27 years. So what I did in 1994, I decided I was just going to sit back and quite frankly, outlive the neighbors. And that's what I did. So now for Mr. Plunkett to come in and say that I don't have rights to that, maybe he's right. We cannot find the court case decision, the appellate court's decision. The attorneys that I used at the time, Quahal, Hattie, and Walsh, is no longer practicing in law law chums. We have called the appellate court for the case and they cannot find it. Mr. Plunkett agreed with my attorney back in the beginning of January. He was going to give him that case. He has not done that. Two weeks ago, we met at another hearing, the Board of Appeals meeting that wasn't held a couple of weeks ago. And Mr. Plunkett again agreed that he would give it to my attorney if my attorney would pay for the copy fees. My attorney has called him and said he put a charge card on the Minuteman Press and Wool so he could bring the file down there and have it copied. I'm here tonight saying if he has a problem with that, I'll give him $200 cash right now. He can make those copies and he can give them to us. And then if you read on, if you go through on page two, the sixth line down in the paragraph says, "Appellants' brief at pages 16 through 34." We have no idea what pages 16 through 34 say. We would like to, excuse me, we would like to know what pages 16 through 34 say. I think your own council would like to know, Doc, because we've given them a title exam that my attorneys did that went back to 1850, not 1950, 1850, better than 173 years ago. And it shows that that road has rights to pass and repass. It shows up to the point of where the Lizaes took it over. We need this, these appellate briefs that Mr. Plunkett has to give to my attorney to maybe resolve this case. I've got plans in front of me that I would like to pass out. This small, that shows what Mr. Plunkett had just said about the roadway.
Patrick.
This was the land disturbance.
Thank you.
This is the land disturbance permit, a plan that we brought when we went to the planning board a couple of months ago and Mr. Plunkett has now appealed this. This shows Foster Lane, I was going to put a one driveway down there to access my lot out back. The, what Mr. Plunkett is saying is I don't have rights to that road. If we look at the next plan I'll give you, which was the subdivision plan of the property next door to me, looking at this plan, if you look at where it says Foster Lane above the purple, that whole section up there is this next plan I'm going to give you which is the subdivision that the town approved back in 2013. Mr. Randella, that Mr. Plunkett represents, appealed this decision. Somehow there was some deal made, and by the way, that subdivision looks real nice. They did a nice job. Somehow they cut a deal to have Mr. Randella drop his suit, his appeal, if I guess he was granted certain concessions. One of those, I believe, is the concession that he was going to get the fee from the town to the center line of Foster Lane. Now, I've heard that and I never saw any evidence to it except for when I got the warrant article that the town has on there. Your upcoming town meeting. Article number 27 says that the town selectmen are going to grant the easement or the rights over Foster Lane to Mr. Randella. If you look at the second plan I just gave you, it shows that as part of the subdivision, this open space subdivision, the access down Foster Lane, there's a strip that goes down Foster Lane and then you get this big piece out back. That's part of the open space. That's what we give when we do open space subdivisions. I don't know how, and I'd like to explain to me if somebody could, how you can give the rights to that road away to a, another person. I've never even been notified about this, about the rights being given away from that road. So it pretty much landlocks me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that information too, sir. I've been doing this a long time and I have to say, I think this is the first time that a poll petition has been a serious concern, so. Yep, and it's led us to some significant questions. Before I go further, do you have further comments, sir?
I just have one, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. If we could get a copy of the file that we've been promised for the last four months from Mr. Plunkett. We're willing to pay for it. We've made that perfectly clear and I'll make it perfectly clear again tonight. I have given, my attorney, excuse me, has sent a copy of the title search for this, for my property to your town council. We do go to the zoning board of appeals again this Thursday night. We need somebody, preferably your council, to say if we're right or wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll accept that. I'll do the next thing, which would be go to court and try and clean this up. I don't see any reason why it's being accepted or there's a deal cut for, you know, back in 2013, to give a piece of land away to, you know, take care of another appeal. I've never heard of that. If you, I'm not an attorney and I don't want to be one, no offense. But I just need to, I need this to be cleaned up. I've owned it for 38 years. My wife and I want to get rid of it or do something with it. We just want to clean things up in our life and that's my spiel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak on this matter? And I'm going to ask you just to, I don't know that there's any more that needs to be said, quite frankly, Mr. Plunkett, because we don't have the benefit of town council here and I think my colleagues are wondering what the next step would be. So I want to at least, before I close the public hearing, ask if there are questions that they want to pose.
I have one. Foster Lane is not a public way. Who owns Foster Lane?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
Is it owned by the town?
So usually, in a case like this, the abudders own to the center of the road. And the town is in a butter because of owning open space.
Okay.
Direct abudders of the road, of the paper street.
That's all I have. I just wanted to make sure. So we do own some of it?
Some, a small strip. I have rights to a small strip.
But as I said, as part of what Article 27 that's going to the town meeting says you're going to give that away.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify, Article 27, if it's approved, doesn't automatically relinquish the town's rights. It only authorizes the board to do so if they come to some agreement or whatever action the board takes. It only authorizes the board to do it. Doesn't mean it will happen.
As I said, I'm not an attorney. I'm not saying that, that, you know, once it's done at town meeting, it gets done. But I just don't see why it's, why it's even being done.
Understood. Okay, all right. I know you want to say something, so I'm going to give you the opportunity. I'm going to ask you to be very brief though, because I'm not sure we can adjudicate this this evening.
All right, okay, good brief, thank you. So just in terms of the court determination, the decision of the court saying that the twist lot is a stranger to the lot has nothing to do with the subdivision of that lot. It has to do with the rights of access to Foster Lane, period. The fact is that if somebody is a stranger to a parcel on a plan of land, it gives them no rights. So there is no vesting of interest in that twist lot to that area. And the only ones with the rights would be those that are part of the plan that created that lane. And I'll just keep it at that. I won't go into the others.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so do we have any motions to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All right, so we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that'll be a five to zero vote. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Mackey, yes.
Given the complexities and ongoing action, I'm going to make a motion to table this to a future date.
Okay, do you want to table it to a fixed date or any date in the future, open date?
Yeah, I would say open date depending on all of the ongoing actions.
Okay.
Second for discussion.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. I just wanted, I support the motion with no friendly amendments. I just wanted to state on the record that I find that the information is incomplete and we need more information to make a decision, so referencing the comments by both parties. So I support bringing this forward, bringing it back at a future date to be decided. So we will watch your progress to the ZBA.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion made and a second to table the matter. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to vote in agreement on that as well, so that would be five to zero.
Do you think we could get an opinion from your town council?
I'm going to ask through the town manager that he bring this conversation to town council and I'll leave it in his capable hands.
I'll speak to him tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, we have another item at 7:30 scheduled. This is Warmest End Entertainment Center. Is there someone here from that? Thank you, welcome. So this is also a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, April 24, at 7:00 PM on the application of Warmest End Entertainment Center, Inc. at 434 Main Street in Tewksbury by Donald R. McLaren, manager, for the following entertainment license applications for their outside patio. Ladies' nights, every Thursday night from June 22 through August 24, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, to include use of amplification system, DJ, acoustic performance and microphone. Number two, dueling pianos from 8:00 to 10:00 PM on July 7 and August 4, to include live music. Number three, comedy show from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, June 30 to September 1, 2023, to include use of amplification system. Number four, movie night on patio, dusk until 11:00 PM on June 28 and July 26, for movie picture show. Next one is acoustic singer from 8:00 to 11:00 PM, July 21 and September 8, to include live music. And last, magician from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on August 18, to include use of amplification system. And the hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room, 1009 Main Street. Legal notice was posted and I believe an extensive list of abudders was also notified and attached to the packet. And if I could ask you to introduce yourself. We met, I think, recently, right?
Yep.
At your last hearing.
Yep, my name's Chanel Wagstaff. I'm the marketing director for Warmest End.
Thank you, all right. So I read the hearing notice and it speaks in general terms, very broad terms. Is there any other color that you want to give to the board tonight to help us make a decision on these requests?
These are basically the same requests we've had for the last three years. We're not adding anything. We're still taking out the live bands, which you guys shut us off from a couple of years ago. I am asking if maybe we could blanket approve some of these so that moving forward, I don't have to keep coming back in front of you. It's been three years now. We've been doing the exact same things every year. I'm hoping if we keep it within these realm, at least of these ones, that we can maybe blanket approve for future use for next year and the year after, so we don't have to keep doing the same song and dance. If there was to be something different or above and beyond anything within our normal events, I would obviously come back to you guys and get it approved. But I would like, if possible, to approve what we're doing here and then on an ongoing basis in the future, as long as it's within the exact same realm of what we're doing here. I would say that we haven't had any police come. We haven't any issues. We're on good terms with the neighbors, a little bit better than we were. So we're trying to work with everybody so that we don't have to have to keep coming in front of you guys.
That's half the bill.
Yeah.
Mr. Montori, just a question for you. Would we have to amend the existing license to meet that request or can we do that separately?
You could probably do it separately.
Okay. All right, and you, all of these items that I just went through and you've provided detail on have been the last three years or two years plus this coming year?
Some of them, three. The only one that hasn't been three would be the magician.
Okay.
And the comedy shows that's going on, it's third, would be this year. Everything else has been three.
Got it, okay, thank you. And the comedy show, is it two nights or is it?
Yeah, that's a misprint. It's an and, so it's just those two dates, yeah.
Yep, okay, okay. All right, do my colleagues have specific questions they'd like to pose?
I only have one, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holland?
Comedy show, is it G-rated?
Yes, because it's outside on the patio, so we have to, they know to not swear, no use provocative of anything. They've done it.
That was a concern.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Anybody else? Okay, are there anyone in, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to talk to this matter? Okay, we're getting off easy tonight.
Soon as we move.
All right, I don't see anyone rising. So if I have no questions from my colleagues, no further input from the public, may I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Or rather, close the public hearing, I apologize. All right, the motion was made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be a five to zero vote in favor of closing the hearing. Do my colleagues have any specific motions they wish to offer?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the licenses. The entertainment license I submitted, and I make that motion to cover a three-year period.
I would only do it one year.
We can only do it for one year?
Yeah.
It'll expire, so you'll have to come back for renewal.
They'll have to come back every year.
Yeah, but instead of her coming back every single time, she'll have to do something different during the year.
Would it be like our entertainment license? How we just pay the fee and renew and stuff? Yeah, in December.
But they'll have to come back for every.
They don't have to come back for a hearing on it.
Right.
Okay, so I make a motion to. Okay, so I I make a motion to approve the uh entertainment license uh as submitted then.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion made uh and a second. Let me ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well, that will make that unanimous. And next year, Mister Chairman, we'll crack a wall to one. Incorporated into the license, right? One license when they come for renewal in December.
Yeah. Just have your dates in December. Come back here and do this again?
No, you just, when you apply for your renewal, we'll put everything into one. And you just got started, come on.
I'm so excited, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the next item is a change of officer request for the ninety nine Restaurant and Pub. Is there anyone here from, yep, welcome. So this is not a formal public hearing, but we have um a lot of activity going on. Um, and there is a change of officer request, um, we've had communication from um the A B C C on this because it involves multiple communities. Um, let me ask if you would introduce yourself for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Elizabeth Pisano, I'm from Upton, Cornell and Devlin on behalf of the ninety nine.
Alright, do you have anything you wanna offer from commentary standpoint to the board?
No, just to make it easy for you guys, it's just a change of LLC managers, there's no changes to any operations at the restaurant. Um, the manager of records staying the same, it's just at the corporate level, they're changing their officers.
Got it, okay. It's a lot of work.
It is.
To get that done. Alright, do um, do my colleagues have any specific questions? Everybody's comfortable, there's extensive documentation um for this request. Alright, and it is not a public hearing, so I'm gonna ask um if there's uh any motions to be made by my colleagues.
Mister Chairman, motion to approve the change of officer for the ninety nine Restaurant and Pub.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion made by Mister Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's a five to zero vote in favor. Thank you and good luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any residents here that wish to speak to any particular item in general this evening? Okay, I don't see anybody rising on that. That brings us to uh the new business section of our agenda. The first item is um the Community Preservation Committee um with Mister Kelly's retirement from our board that leaves a vacancy for a select board representative to the Community Preservation Committee. I did speak with Mister Holland, um, since he replaced Mister Kelly and asked if he had interest in serving on that committee as a designee and I believe you said Affirmative. You were in the affirmative, so um could I ask for a motion to make Mister Holland our designee to the CPC?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to designate Patrick Holland as the board of, the select board's uh designee to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mister Mackey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote as well, thank you, Mister Mont. Okay, next, um we may have, we may have um been a little hasty on this effort, but um we wanted to schedule or begin the process of scheduling um our hearings on licenses for retail cannabis operations. Um, and what came to light as our package was prepared was that um in the room down the hall this evening, there are a number of licensed applicants uh before the planning board. So um unfortunately, we're not gonna have the benefit of um the planning board's decisions um on any of their activity tonight as we talk about this. But my hope is, and the reason it was on the agenda was to um align our calendars
Hmm.
um to start to look forward to um scheduling of hearings. Um, as entities move through the site plan review process at the planning board, um, the the approach that we've taken is that once they get a determination from the planning board, we would begin to schedule hearings. So what I would like to propose is that we focus um on the month of June um and schedule for planning purposes, um maybe set aside four dates and that would allow us to um reserve those evenings. Um, I don't know that we'll need all four, we have no idea as we sit here, how many will go through the approval process at the planning board. We have one that currently has achieved that status. Um, but just trying to think ahead, we have uh board meetings scheduled on the sixth of June and the twenty seventh of June as it already stands. Um, and so we don't impede upon the other normal business items that we would tend to. My thinking is that we would schedule, um, as I said, three or four um additional evenings in the month of June if that's acceptable and we can get those on the calendar and then we'll work with the town manager and his team to notify um the parties that um come out of the twenty fourth and we could discuss this again, maybe at our meeting right after town meeting. Does that make sense to people?
Sounds like a plan.
Alright.
Yeah, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Just um I have a question about, we have this as a round, right, we're going to have it as a round that's open. And in light of the fact that some of these um licensed applicants had their submit, their license submitted in October, I'm wondering if we should close the round and say, if you haven't had a community meeting, you're not going to make round one and you have a couple of weeks to get your stuff submitted or pick a date certain that you, folks who have had these meetings need to get their stuff in or not, you know, if they're not gonna do it so that we can move the process forward. And so that's, you know, something I think that we should consider doing. Um, I do think we should put some dates on the calendar, but folks aren't getting their stuff and they're not gonna get in front of us in June, you know, so.
Yep, so I think every entity of the eleven has had a community outreach meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Mister Mackey?
Uh, I believe the communication that the town manager's office sent out about a month or so ago was that if they weren't in front of the planning board already, they were gonna draw the line for the first tranche.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just because there's, as we can see, we've had a few new ones pop up, which is great, there's so much interest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but seeing as some of these have gone back quite some ways, I think it will be beneficial to make some forward progress.
Mm-hmm.
So I I do support the idea of uh kinda drawing that line in the sand. But I would say we probably wanna look at the first tranche being, if you're not already through the planning board. If I remember the verbiage on that communication, it was if you are signaled to be ready or close to approval with the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my recommendation for what that line is.
Okay, so clarify for me the line.
Uh, the ones that are on, I believe you said the four twenty four, so today's date. Based on the outcome of today's meeting, I would say that's your first tranche.
We, did we, threw you, Mister Chairman, to the town manager, did we put a date certain on anything at all?
No, the letters that went out, um s- s- strongly encouraged them to stop the site plan review process, we didn't put any dates on it.
And when did that letter go out?
That letter went out, I have it in front of me, it went out February twenty second.
Okay, so like two months ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Mister Chairman, my thought is, I I agree that we should, we need to move forward with this. But I also think we need to clarify a date of, you know, we we put something they should move forward, but we didn't actually give them a date
Right.
That they must submit something by. I think we should make a date of, and put it out, this is a firm date.
Yep.
Before we tell somebody that they're not allowed to be in the first hearing and just come up with something that you must get it in by whatever it is to be in front of us.
I agree.
I would allow that, I would think that we, they have to go in front of the planning board, so maybe a date after like two planning board meetings or something like that, or I'm just trying to think of that they'd be able to have time to get in. So I, if we have four submissions that have nothing, that haven't gone in front of the planning board, I think it's gonna be hard for for, you know, or anybody else to come in for one meeting. So I would suggest maybe, you know, pick a date after two more planning board and meetings and say that's a firm date that you have to submit by and then we have something locked in. They'll have the opportunity to go to two meetings and then if they're not taking advantage of it, obviously they're not serious going forward. And then we'll know who the players are and who um are serious about, you know, trying to open a shop in town.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, uh, if I recall, the reason we sent out that communication from the town manager's office was to give people that nudge. Um, cuz again, we have applications that have been on the town manager desk for eight, nine months now. Um, so most, most of these people, to my understanding, have gone through a majority of planning board hearings um dating back to January. So this isn't, it's not that it's new, it's not a surprise, um, but I believe the point of tonight was to set the dates for that first tranche. So I have absolutely no issues pushing out dates for the second tranche, but we, we've had a lot of meetings, we've set it's been on four agendas. We haven't set dates, I would, I would very much like to to move this forward and we can absolutely set dates further out for the second tranche.
Mister Chairman, I I appreciate um Mister Mackey's position, um, and I, and I don't disagree. But I have to say that I agree with um Mister Kratman, that because this board hasn't put a final date for, you know, deadline. Um, and I think folks do tend to focus on deadlines, I'd rather say, let's say this is, you know, here's the deadline and you gotta get it in. You have to be on this list already to be in round one. And if you don't have it in in, you know, two weeks or May, May fifteenth, I'm throwing May fifteenth out as a date, but we should pick a date. Um, you know, then you, then you can apply for tranche two. But um I think, I think it's incumbent upon the board to say, this is the date. And we're learning as we're doing, we're sort of assembling the aircraft while we're flying it. And so I think, going back to February, I think we would have been good to put a date on probably at that point and we didn't. Um, to Mister Mackey's uh point, so um, but I I would, I would propose uh closing the round for applications or due by May fifteenth and I'll make that in the form of a motion. Or for discussion.
Just applications to who?
The planning board or the select, to the, what would you recommend, Mister, Mister Manager?
So that's what I guess, right, yeah.
Follow the rules, just get it in.
Right, so i- if, I think an application to the board of selectmen and have uh filed an application to get on the planning board agenda.
Okay.
Put both of those for, for the date certain and just so the board knows um, the next meeting or the, the next time somebody will be able to get on the, if they haven't applied already, uh, June twelfth because uh that deadline's May eleventh for the planning board. And uh then June twenty six has a date of May twenty fifth, so we're already into June for the planning board.
Maybe not May fifteenth, maybe earlier.
So the deadline to get on the agenda for the planning board was what, May? May eleventh for the June twelfth meeting.
For the June twelfth meeting, okay.
And then for the June twenty sixth, it'd be May twenty fifth.
So maybe May fifth or May eighth is a deadline? I'm just making, Monday, Friday. Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
You can go right up to May eleventh, I mean, that's the day, it's gotta be submitted to the planning board.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, end of day four thirty.
Yep, so four thirty P M, May eleventh for the deadline?
Yep, application to the board and to the planning board.
For an application to the board, to the select board and to the planning board?
Yep.
By May eleventh at four thirty P M, by four thirty P M. I'll make that in the form of a motion, Mister Chairman.
Okay, is there a second or a comment?
Uh, point of clarification, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, so was that for closing all applications on that date?
Uh, that is for anybody who's on this list, who hasn't already made those applications, to make those applications.
Okay.
Alright, so friendly amendment, that it's limited to the names on this list.
Uh, I'll, I'll second that with a question, um, how are we notifying? Uh, I know we probably have it on the website, but is this going out in any, like how, how are we getting this information out to the businesses that this date is?
We'll, we'll send another letter up.
To the businesses themselves?
The applicants that have not submitted, alright. Okay, alright, okay, so they're all being notified. And approximately how many are there, Mister, do you have an idea off the top of your head? Off this, there's eleven on here. Maybe three or four. Okay, so there's none beyond this eleven? No. Okay, I appreciate. Well, yeah, right, that's it. Okay. That's it. Okay. I, before, I I guess I just wanna make also clarify, you're gonna set the date for the applicants to submit to the planning board and to the selectmen and then that's the cutoff. We're not gonna consider any of this until you go, till, till you've either. It's the first tranche. Right.
Yeah.
But you're gonna start interviewing in January and you could
June.
Possibly, June rather, uh possibly award three licenses.
Correct.
Let's say the first three come in and the board thought they were great, you could award all three and then you're done. I, I just want that, I don't want anybody to be misled that you're gonna hold off on any decision until you have all your hearings. You are gonna listen, you're gonna determine if someone should get a license or shouldn't, but you're not gonna hold off on a decision. Yeah, you could, you could hold off on a decision, but you may not.
I don't know if the boards decided that, have we decided?
No, no, but I just want everyone to understand, all things are on the table, all, all possibilities are on the table. And I think what you just described is one possible course, another is that the board decides in its wisdom to to hear all of it. Listen to many of them or all of them before they take action. This is a new process that we're going through, right? So we're, you know, to use um my colleague Wellman's um analogy of we're building the plane while it's in midair, right? So we have to learn as we go here as a community. Um, and our job is obviously to do what's in the best interest of the town, so. No, I just wanna make a click, cuz I think there are applicants, yeah, may be misled to think, well, at least they're not gonna make a decision until they meet me. Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah, it's not to anyone's advantage to wait.
No.
Yeah.
Or advantage to get in, it's, it's gonna, you're gonna decide based on what you hear. Yep. Okay, does that make sense to my colleagues?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So I think there's two decisions, I know Ms. Wellman offered a motion, I'm gonna ask her to restate it.
Okay.
And we'll take a vote on that and then I think subsequent to that was the original intent of putting it on the agenda, which was to then take some dates in the month of June that we can um set aside that everyone's available for and we'll use those for the actual hearings, okay?
Okay.
So could I ask you to be kind enough to restate your motion so we capture that correctly?
Certainly, Mister Chairman, um, I'll make a motion that all applicants on our applicant list is in, included in our packet, who have not already made applications to the planning board, to be on the planning board agenda or to the select board, need to make those applications by four thirty P M on May eleventh, two thousand twenty three.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Alright, so the motion was offered as stated by Ms. Wellman, seconded by my, by Mister Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well, okay? So we now, and we'll ask the town manager, which was implied in your motion, to inform the parties of that. We'll do so. Right? Okay. Alright, so now that brings us to uh the month of June. As I said, we have a board meeting currently scheduled on June sixth, another on June twenty seven. And I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but I'll offer a straw. And I might regret this, but let me offer June twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen.
That's, that's, that's a lot in one week.
Yep, we can break it up, I'm just offering a straw.
Okay.
We could do June twelve and June thirteen and um and then the nineteen and twenty if you want. Nineteenth's a holiday. Nineteenth's a.
Holiday, yeah, it's Juneteenth.
Good catch. Mister Chairman, do you wanna hold off on, do you wanna set aside that since you usually meet on Tuesdays, hold a, definitely hold a thirteenth and the twentieth? Can do that, does that work for people?
Works for me.
Yeah.
Alright, thirteen and twenty? And if you, you could start at six, that way you start early, if that works, I'm sorry, Jane.
Six is fine, any night is okay, it's fine.
How does, um, what day of the week is the twenty-ninth? Is that a?
That's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Alright, um.
That's Eid, yeah, that's, is that right? I look at the wrong one. Oh, it's Eid right now.
Alright, are two dates sufficient in everyone's mind or we do wanna go one more?
So do we wanna do twelve, thirteen and then twenty?
We could.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Does June twelve work?
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Kratman?
Works for me, I prefer it before the end of the month when we get in, before we get to the fourth of July.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so six P M on the twelfth, six P M on the thirteenth, six P M on six twenty. Okay?
Three candidates hearing dates. Do we wanna book one in July just in case?
Um, how about if we wait to get our results from the planning board's decisions this evening? Um, cause some of them might get hung up.
Yeah.
Um, and we can put this back on the agenda for, uh, we meet in early May, right? Um, mid-May.
Uh, sixteen, yeah. You actually have meetings right before town meeting, I can give you an update then.
So if we could get an update and then if we feel we need it, then we can look at July.
I'll get, I'll, I'll give you an update next week.
Long way out, yeah. Alright, so let's use those dates, um, if everyone can reserve those. Six twelve, six thirteen, six twenty, six P M.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've accomplished a lot already. Alright, thank you for that clarification and Mr. Montori, thank you for your help on that as well. Alright, I'm gonna move us along to, uh, we have switch box art, um, approval and there is communication, um, from, uh, Ms. Impink. Who I believe is here. Hello, welcome, come on up, sit down. We've, this board has addressed this in the past, so, um, you know, we, we know a little bit about the topic. But if you could both introduce yourselves and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, good evening and thank you. Um, my name is Paige Impink, I'm the clerk of the Tuxbury Beautification Committee.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Balch Kenny and I am the chair of the Beautification Committee.
Alright, welcome. Thank you. Alright, so we have, um, we have your memo to the town manager. We have the explanations that were offered by, um, the students who, um, proposed the art. And we have, um, the page that depicts what they will be putting on, or proposing to be putting on, um, particular switch box. So is this a new switch box or a one that was not done initially?
Nope, this is a, an existing switch box at, uh, East and Chandler Street. It was part of the initial program that was started in two thousand fifteen. The box, uh, fell into, um, a lot of, um, chipping and cracking, so it just wasn't attractive any longer. So, um, the town manager had it just painted with, uh, gray cover paint until we could find artists interested in painting the, uh, design on the switch box. We have reached far and wide to try to find different, uh, people to take it over. And, um, we're very lucky to have students at Shawshank Tech, uh, be interested in taking over the box as a project. Part of their, um, visual arts group.
So we, we started this all the way back in two thousand fifteen, it's hard to believe.
Yes, and they look tremendous. I think they're a really wonderful exhibition of public art in the community. Just to bring members up to speed who may not have been on the board at the time. Um, the theme is always Tuxbury Past, Present and Future. And so that is, um, following guidelines that other communities have shared when they've undertaken these projects. And I'm sure you've seen switch boxes all over, really the country, but, um, we're following best practices as laid out in Massachusetts.
Very good. Okay, do my colleagues have specific questions?
Hi, you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kratman. So I'm very happy that you have somebody new that's willing to take it over. What was on it before?
What was on it before was an airplane depicting the Two Mac Airport. And the design was, was tremendous. It faces the senior center and, um, piece of history, of course, so that's Tuxbury Past. But it just was chipping and peeling and, um, just wasn't able to be attractive.
And the original applicant no longer wanted to do it over?
Oh, the original applicant is out of state.
Okay.
Washington State now.
Okay, I just wanna make, that was my.
Absolutely.
I just didn't wanna have somebody come back and say, I did that and now it's gone.
So we reached out.
Okay, that's all.
Yes.
My only question.
Excellent, okay. So, um, I think in the past we've authorized these to take place, so, um, if that's the case, let me ask my colleagues if they have a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the switch box, switch box art that has been submitted for the Tuxbury Beautification Committee has submitted.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that will be a unanimous vote.
Great.
When do you think this might get done?
Um, I'm sure it's going to happen very quickly. They're waiting for an email from me this evening, actually. Um, the superintendent is very excited from Shawshank Tech as well.
Terrific.
Um, I did also wanna mention that we are in consult with the D P W director. So that all precautions are taken, so that D P W has full access to the box.
Yeah.
Um, as well as the police department, so they understand when they see a large group out at a box, what's happening.
Okay.
Um, and if we also could mention while we're here.
Oh, yeah, so Town Wine Cleanup Day, May sixth, everybody come get your bags, come pick up trash. We're also doing, um, e-waste recycling, paper shredding and also Helpsy's gonna be, uh, giving us a box or a bin to donate for textile recycling. And that means clothing, good clothing or even bad clothing that you, Helpsy will sort it out and they, they, you know. So if it's even ripped clothing, it doesn't have to be perfect, you know, they take it all.
Okay, alright, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, um, one question, is there also a food drive that day?
There is.
Aha.
Thank you.
Can you mention that?
Oh, yes, so there'll be, um, we also, as always in all of our town cleanups, um, we ask people to donate food to the town food pantry. They'll have a table both at the, um, at Town Common, when you come pick up supplies, uh, the Democratic Committee will be there collecting, um, some, uh, you know, food if you wanna drop off with them. And then also when you come to drop off all your stuff, the Tuxbury Pantry, which is at the D P W, will be there too and they'll have a table going as well. So whichever location you prefer.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you both so much. Alright, um, we have next to turn to a request, um, of the board to authorize the expenditure or use of two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, and that is to buy down two units at, um, Merrimack Meadows. Uh, one is, uh, twenty-five Merrimack Meadows Lane and the other is two thirteen, oops, no, maybe I misspoke. Um, two eleven Merrimack Meadows Lane, I'm sorry, and eighty-six Merrimack Meadows Lane. One is for one hundred ten thousand, three sixty, the second is for one twenty-five, two hundred and eighty dollars. Um, the state will be contributing ten thousand dollars on each of those. Um, in order for us to maintain the affordability component, uh, in perpetuity. The request is made to, uh, use the town's funds. Um, and our trust fund is currently in, in excess of six point three million dollars. So we've done this before as is stated in the memo. Um, let me ask if there's any questions.
Yeah.
There is a question.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. So the letter states that there are two units that are currently for sale. Um, and are in danger of losing their deed restriction, I assume if they don't sell in the affordable, um, through that, through those channels.
Correct.
So if they do sell, we don't have to pay to buy down these units?
They would just be market rate at that.
They would, I'm sorry?
They'd just be market rate at that, market rate units would not count.
So if, do we have to do this before they don't sell?
Correct.
Okay. You feel?
However, you just said that, yes. Before they sell these units, we need to do this.
We have to, yeah, okay. And if they, if they do sell at the affordable rate through those channels, we don't have to buy them down. It's not binding if it's sold under the current affordable housing process.
If, if, okay.
Because the deed restriction's still intact, right?
No.
No.
The deed restrictions ends, that's the problem.
If it's sold through the affordable housing channels?
If they, the deed restriction is ending, so now that unit can be sold at market rate.
I see.
And not be counted as an affordable unit. We have the opportunity before that happens to buy that unit down with these funds. Keep the deed restriction in place, keep the units affordable in perpetuity.
Why isn't the deed restriction already in perpetuity?
Just had a time limit on it at the time.
Is that right?
It's not the first time it's happened.
Okay.
Mr. Sadwick, you want?
Because my understanding is if it doesn't sell at, through those affordable housing channels, and sometimes that's how you lose it.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sadwick.
Sure, Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. The, um, this project, Merrimack Meadows Lane, I think was nineteen eighty-eight. And so that was before we were doing units in perpetuity or had the authority to do that. And this was also under a program through Department of Housing and Community Development, which was the homeownership program. And those hop units have been troubled as how they were structured originally. So you do lose, there's, there's called a discount rate that's in, in these deeds. Um, so you end up losing the affordability when they go for resale. It's, it's a very, it's kind of a complicated thing and it's an anomaly that we don't see in other projects and it's a very old project for us. Um, so we've done this twice in the past. When we participate, we then can put that affordable deed rider in place that holds it in perpetuity.
Okay.
So that's how, this, just, we, we've done it before and it's, like I said, this is just a, um, one-off from the way we do things today.
Okay, I, I appreciate the clarification on that mechanism, which is a little old, so I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadwick, before you leave, I got a question. So if we make this investment, does it stay what this?
Property forever.
Forever, okay, that's, so we don't want, we won't have to come back again.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
And we've had, we've had two or three, maybe even more instances of this where, um, the board in recent years has taken that action to, you know, either correct or address the situation where we face the possible loss of affordable units.
Correct, yeah.
It's, and I, I guess I'll say it's my opinion, but it's a good, a good use of the resources to maintain that in perpetuity.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, and no further questions, can I ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the buydown, um, as presented at two eleven Merrimack Meadows Lane and eighty-six Merrimack Meadows Lane from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second. Okay, so the motion's offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. Um, authorizing two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars from the trust fund. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will make that unanimous five to zero as well. Okay, um, we're gonna turn to the town warrants, um, for, um, our upcoming annual and special town meetings. Um, and I will note, um, for the record, that annual town meeting will start at seven thirty P M on May first. Um, at Tuxbury Memorial High School. Um, it's my understanding in reviewing the warrants that, um, and talking with the town manager that, um, from the time he made his budget presentation to this board, um, and we've all had our, um, our own budget meetings and discussions with him to review the proposed budget, um, not much has changed through the process. Um, so just in an effort to try to save us a few minutes of time tonight, rather than have him comment on each and every article. We will obviously have to review each and take, uh, or make an offer of a recommendation to town meeting this evening on each article. But, um, I'm not gonna ask him to comment. If you have a question on a particular article, um, please ask for clarification and we'll pause and ask Mr. Montori to jump in. But my intention is to try to move through these a little bit faster than we normally do because nothing has really changed.
And I'll, and I'll highlight whatever changes are in article, in article four.
Okay, alright, so, um, on the annual town meeting warrant. Um, Article one, of course, is the annual town election that took place in April. Um, so there is no action required by the board. Uh, the residents of the community have spoken at the ballot box.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, can I interrupt? We, we have a petitioner here tonight, did you wanna take him out of order?
I didn't realize that, yes. What article are we talking about?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
In the annual, yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Come on up and sit down. Sure, we'll do that. Thank you, I appreciate your, that would have left you with a.
Oh, yeah, right, I'll get home tonight.
Get home by the time I will.
Um, Jim Handley.
Introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jim Handley, uh, president of Civil Design Consultants. I was here about, uh, six weeks ago, give it a take, to discuss the, our request for your support to accept Grammy's Way and, uh, Border Road. Uh, both in Tuxbury, they're both small, uh, single-family residential roadways.
Right.
They're on the warrant article right now. Um, we are, uh, making progress addressing D P W's review comments. We hope to have, um, we hope to have everything completed this week. We still got a couple of outstanding things to do, but we're talking to them every day and we're getting close. Um, one item that, uh, came up last week was relative to town, uh, to the street trees that were planted. Um, there was a deviation between what was planted and what was proposed in two thousand seventeen and then again, two thousand twenty for the other street. Um, uh, the, 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 the intent was to avoid any kind of, uh, uh, issue as we move forward this week. So I went to planning board tonight, I presented what we did, I requested specifically a waiver to section nine point seven one and nine point seven two, which just gives us a little bit of latitude on where we can plant those trees throughout the development. Um, which is something that generally had been done in, uh, uh, um, it, it seems that moving forward, we're gonna have more of a strict compliance with the, with the approved plan. Um, planning board just approved that. Um, so I'm not sure there is, needs to be any kind of formal action taken by the board tonight. But I just, since I was here, I wanted to give you an update, let you know that, uh, we did get this waiver specific to, uh, landscaping. Um, and over the next couple of days, we, we hope to have all of the, uh, D P W items addressed.
So, so what we probably would do, um, sir, is, um, the board typically will schedule a meeting, um, probably at six o'clock, six thirty, um, on May first.
Mm-hmm.
And that will give you and the other parties involved, as well as, uh, public works officials who aren't present tonight.
Yeah.
Opportunity to tie up any loose ends.
Okay.
And then this board can take that up potentially on the first, just before town meeting to offer a recommendation. Cause if there's still outstanding items and things pending, um, it, it kinda makes it difficult for us to.
Yeah, understood.
Take a firm position, right? So I, I, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if that meets with their approval and if so, I'd ask for a motion just to table it to May first at six thirty P M. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, alright, um, and that applies to Article twenty-eight and Article twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, and then it sounds like you've made a lot of progress, cause my recollection is the list was quite extensive on both and it sounds like you're, you're making some headway. So that, that's good for the residents of those two streets and good for the town. We appreciate the effort and thank you for, um, coming in and hanging around.
You bet, thank you.
Alright. Okay, let me take you back to Article two. Um, so Article two is to set the compensation or stipends for various town officials, elected town officials, um, in the town of Tuxbury. If there's no comments, can I ask for a motion?
So moved.
Uh, a motion made to recommend adoption by Mr. Kratman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holland. Um, all those in favor of recommending adoption of Article two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that will be unanimous. Um, Article three is the consent calendar, so we'll go through Article three dash thirty-one. Um, is to allow for the acceptance of various reports from town officers, um, annual town report. If there's no questions, is there a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor of recommending adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous. Um, three dash thirty-two, uh, is an annual article that allows the town manager to lease or purchase equipment for various departments subject to annual appropriation. It's a standard article. If there are no questions, is there a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. We have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will make that unanimous. Three dash thirty-three is the annual article pertaining to the use of chapter ninety funds. Um, and it authorizes the town to utilize those funds. There are no questions, can I ask for a motion to recommend adoption?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Um, the last one on the consent calendar is three dash thirty-four, and this is the annual article that lays out the various revolving funds that we currently have and their expenditure cap limit, um, on the specific fund. Um, if there's no questions, can I ask for a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Article Four is the annual town general fund budget. Let me pause and catch my breath and ask Mr. Montori if he wants to offer any comments on this very important document.
Sure, just quickly and at a high level, the, um, budget that's being presented, uh, at town meeting, totals a hundred and thirty-six million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars. That's an increase of five million, six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars over the previous year's, um, budget. Um, that is prior to any allocations, uh, within the budget. allocations meaning money we, uh, indirect costs or charges to the enterprise funds for water, sewer, um, cable TV. Uh, when we take into consideration the, um, allocations, the budget for the town is a hundred and thirty-four million, one hundred five thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, which is an increase of four million, eight hundred sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars over the previous fiscal year. The, uh, budget really has not changed significantly, well, it has changed since I presented, and I'll go, presented it in January, and I'll go through those changes in a moment, but, you know, just briefly, um, the, um, town, um, uh, budget, uh, for salaries, um, itself, just salaries alone, increased, um, two hundred forty-nine thousand, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight, uh, dollars. Uh, the town budget in total, uh, increased, uh, two million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, netted allocations, uh, compared to last fiscal year. The town's operating expenses, the general expenses for departments increased net allocations, two hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Excuse me, it increased four hundred, uh, four thousand, I'm just looking at the right number. Increased four hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and, um, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, over last fiscal year. The big increases in the budget, and that's through all the town operating expenses, but the big increases in the F Y, uh, twenty-four budget were in a few areas. The first was solid waste, uh, collection and disposal. That budget had an overall increase of five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. And that increase is largely based on what's happening in the industry. Now, when I've talked to area towns, all, uh, towns that are, uh, that have new contracts starting on July one, have seen major increases in their solid waste budgets, in fact, um, they have seen larger increases than we are seeing. Uh, the other major increase to the budget, uh, obviously is, uh, health insurance. Uh, the town's health insurance increased three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the other major increase in the budget was middlesex retirement's assessment, uh, which is for our retirees, increased one million, two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Once we factor in the allocations for water and sewer, the increase was nine hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That increase is due to middlesex retirement, uh, conducting a new valuation of the town's system, uh, based on two thousand twenty-two actuarial information. And because of that, we saw, uh, an over eleven percent increase in our, um, assessment to middlesex retirement. Our property, uh, liability insurance increased, um, net allocations, thirty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars. And, um, you know, those were the major, uh, fixed cost increases that we saw on the budget. When you're looking at the school budget, the school budget increased, uh, two million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Of that, one million, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars was for salaries. Uh, their operating budget increased eight hundred twenty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars. And the major portion of that increase was due to school transportation costs. That was the big change, um, from when I initially, uh, presented the budget. The school, uh, business manager anticipated a ten percent increase, uh, for school transportation. Uh, once he received bids, that number came in higher than he anticipated, so we had to adjust. The other area, uh, for the schools, I'm just going through the final breakdown of the budget, their fixed costs, uh, increased, uh, four hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. They saw an increase in their health insurance also, uh, of four hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Their retirement assessment, similar to the town's, went up a hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars. And their property, uh, liability insurance, uh, actually decreased two thousand, twenty-six dollars. So that's the school budget, and as I previously, previously mentioned, the town budget. The other area in the budget that had a major increase was the Shawshank Tech budget. Um, and this was one of the big changes from when I presented the budget in January, I present, I presented a, um, six percent increase for the Shawshank Tech budget, uh, when, uh, they finally provided the assessment, it was closer to nine percent for their increase. Uh, their increase will, uh, be six hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars in F Y twenty-four. And that's mainly, uh, due to, um, uh, fixed costs that they have for, uh, for transportation, similar to our school system, uh, their health insurance costs, but mainly, um, they saw a big increase in the area of, um, capital improvements for the building. So that is the budget for Article Four.
And I want to reference, um, I should have said this at the outset, Mr. Montori, um, the supplemental handout that you prepare every year, it, um, is, uh, I'll comment that it's ever improving, and again, outstanding, but it is on the website, I believe, now.
It's on, it's on the website, um, if anyone needs one, print it and mail to them, we obviously would do that. And it has more detail than I just went over
Yeah.
with the entire budget.
But at a minimum, everything you just referenced is cited in here as well.
Correct.
If people have interest or questions about anything we're discussing around the budget this evening, this handout is an excellent resource, and I prefer them to it. Um, and it's available online already.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
Through you to the town manager, um, the, the handout is on the, um, town meeting page, I think it's like the third bullet document down. Is it possible to put the warrant and this document, the two warrants and this document, in a newsflash, so that folks who subscribe to it could just have an email to them?
Yep.
Just be like...
Do that for a couple of days this week.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Excellent. All right, are there any questions about the budget?
Uh, unfortunately, I just have one question. Uh, the Shawshank Tech, um, that got submitted quite late to us, and it was kind of shocking when I saw the number come in with that amount. Is there that many more Tuxbury students going there, or did it go from six percent to nine percent?
No, actually, no. It wasn't, it wasn't, uh, um, driven by, uh, the number of students, actually, um, we, if I have to pull it up, we might have gone down in students, um, in F Y twenty, for F Y twenty-four. It was driven solely by the, they had certain education costs that they, um, uh, that they brought forward. Uh, but most of it was, uh, fixed costs, as I mentioned, with school transportation and, um, capital improvements to the building. Uh, another big part of it was, they just didn't see an increase in their state aid, in the governor's budget that they hoped to see. Um, they, uh, just didn't see that much of an increase at all. They did see a bigger increase in the house budget, but not sure that's gonna carry to the end of the, uh, budget process. So it was, it was a surprise, uh, to, uh, me, it was a surprise to the other managers. It was a process that went later than normal, mainly because, um, because of having a new governor. Uh, a new governor has granted additional time to submit their budget. So they, in turn, didn't have numbers to finalize, to give to us. They usually give them to us in January, February timeframe, it didn't happen till March. So the decision was, we'll go forward with the budget as they presented, and hopefully, um, they can continue to look at it and adjust, and if the assessment can be lowered, then we can address that down the road.
Now, um, you said, and a lot of these things came in from capital improvements they made on their school. Do we have any say in what they're doing, if, for them to?
Yeah.
They come in next year and they decide to do, cause I heard they're doing a lot of upgrades at the school.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd, wouldn't like to see a budget next year of another additional, you know, three or four or five percent over what we're expecting. And do we have any say in what they're doing, or is that something?
I mean, if it's, if it's early enough, we can, we can definitely work a lot, um, a lot more on the budget, uh, as we have in the past. Um, it's helpful if you have all the towns in coordinate, other towns in coordination with us. Uh, we do have elected members to the Shawshank Tech, uh, school committee, so reaching out to them and getting, you know, giving them, uh, some information and concerns, uh, is always helpful. But, you know, we, again, if it's the processes early enough, we can definitely have input in doing that.
I would, I would request that you open, like, a line of communication with them. I know they have a new superintendent, a new, uh, group of people over there, but to be hit with a three percent increase, uh, you know, when, when we're going to town meeting, that's, that's, that's pretty significant to be sent over to us, and, and I hear they're doing many more upgrades to the facility. So if, I, just like I said, I, I'd wanna be aware of their, what they're doing, and have something, uh, a heads up.
Yeah, no.
If something comes to us next year.
Sure, you're absolutely right, again, it, it was a three percent increase beyond what we projected. Um, it is a new superintendent, it is a new business manager, it's, the committee, I'm not sure of the longevity of, you know, the members on the committee, I think of some of them are, are new also. Um, so, um, hopefully, they, uh, address some of the, uh, items we've brought to their attention, and, um, we commit it to next year, uh, starting the process earlier.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And the finance committee has, um, reviewed, and I'm sure they expressed similar concerns, but...
Yeah, I think every, I think our finance committee absolutely did, and I know from talking to the other managers, the other finance committees did also. And I, and I, again, because of the new administration over there, we, we will work differently next year.
And not, not to justify anything, cause I agree with you, Mr. Kravman, um, and I know the town manager, um, expressed his concerns as well, but, um, one thing that's a little different is in our budget, we have operating separated from capital, and in their number, it's one big number. So I don't know if that's possible at all, Mr. Montori, to even break that down in the future, you know, I, if you have to request that from them, or you have the capacity to do that, but that might be helpful too, because separating those two things is telling.
Yeah, we could try to, we can get that separate, we can get that separated.
Yeah, might be something to think about, if we present it really as one number.
And to that point, uh, you know, our town manager does a wonderful job of budgeting, saying, you know, we may get more in chapter ninety money, but we're not expecting it. And yet, here we are, they thought they were gonna get more, I'd rather them, you know, follow our lead of here's what we've got in the past, not expect something until it comes to fruition.
Correct. And, and just one last thing that was important with the Shawshank budget, usually they, they have what they call an excess and deficiency fund, which is their version of free cash, and they would normally use that money for capital. Um, well, similar again, again, similar to our free cash, which we get certified shortly after July one, their current excess and deficiency is not certified, so they didn't have a number to say, we'll use so much towards, um, capital. And what we've asked them to do is, once that's certified, if they can use some towards capital, then they may readjust the assessments down the road. So, so I, I think we've, we've pu- put into the budget what, what would be the worst-case scenario for F Y twenty-four, hopefully it gets better.
Thank you.
So do we ever have the member of that Shawshank School Committee sit in that chair? Was she ever invited, or he, or whoever?
Um, we have in the past, not in the recent, last few years.
They go to the finance committee meetings?
Yeah.
Um, the, the members of the committee, so they were, one of them was, they were in attendance at the Finance Committee Public Hearing, and they did speak. And, and just to go back to our question, um, Mr. Kravman asked, we had, uh, a difference of nine less students, uh, going into F Y twenty-four, compared to F Y twenty-three, overall, the school itself saw a decrease of twenty-eight students. So, uh, Bill Ricker had, uh, twenty less students, Burlington, two less students, and Wilmington, three more students, and they're all on a similar boat to where we are.
All right, so as we look at next year's budget process, I know you started earlier, and earlier every year, this is one item that maybe we want to have some more discussion on. All right, are there any other questions about the budget itself? And if not, um, may I ask for, um, a motion to recommend adoption of the town manager's budget?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by, uh, Mr. Holland to recommend adoption of Article Four. Article Five is the, uh...
Did you vote on that one?
I had a vote.
Did I not vote? I'm sorry, I'm getting punch drunk. Okay, um, motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will make that unanimous, I apologize, so I'll do my best to concentrate. Okay, Article Five is the, uh, sewer enterprise fund budget. Are there any questions, first and foremost? Mr. Montori, is there any commentary you want to offer in this area?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, it's all laid out in the, uh, handout and, and the article. Um, the, um, only change from when I brought it to the selectmen, uh, originally, the, uh, the, there was a decrease in debt service, which allowed the projected increase, um, for rates to, uh, drop. So we're projecting now the average increase to be twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Twenty-two fifty?
Yep.
Increase average, is that on ninety thousand gallons?
Uh, that's just the average, what, cause that, most of our uses are within, um, fifty thousand gallons in a year.
All right. Very good. Okay, so if there are no questions, may I ask for a motion to recommend adoption of Article Five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was offered by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous. Article Six, similar, is the water enterprise fund budget. Are there any questions on that? Any information you want to share, Mr. Montori?
No, nothing's changed since I presented this, uh, budget, um, in, uh, February. There were no additions or subtractions from it.
Okay. Okay, um, may I ask for a motion to recommend adoption of Article Six?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion offered, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be unanimous as well. Excuse me, Article Seven is, um, the stormwater enterprise fund. Um, are there any questions on that? And if not, may I ask for a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be unanimous. Article Eight is to, um, appropriate the sum of four hundred and six thousand, thirty-eight dollars, uh, for the cable TV enterprise fund. Are there any questions on that?
Um, I just want to make a comment on that, uh, quickly. Uh, as we're looking around the room, I see a bunch of upgrades that we're doing. So, uh, I know the residents are constantly talking to us about, um, being able to see and know more information that's happening at our meetings, and so we have a couple of smart boards, improved microphones, so you can actually hear us, improved cameras that you can see everyone. And, uh, we got a couple of smart boards that I think at next public meetings, that as people are bringing in presentations, that, uh, will, you know, the residents sitting in the, uh, in the crowd here will be able to see, and I think will be able to share with the residents at home.
Yep.
Um, so as we're talking about it, and we have a package sitting in front of us, a lot of times, people are sitting in the audience, they have no idea what we're talking about. I've been at many planning board meetings where they'll have a... I've been at many planning board meetings where they'll have a submittal and they'll have a whole bunch of documents. And they'll be talking about things, but you have no idea what their packages are or what's submitted. And you can see the plans. So this new technology, I think, is a great investment that we're making. And so I I make a motion to approve this article.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman to recommend adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote as well. Article Nine is to transfer um one point nine three seven five oh five from the town stabilization fund. And there's a list of purposes described um in the article itself. Are there any questions about that? If not, may I ask for a uh motion to recommend adoption of Article Nine?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be a unanimous a unanimous vote as well. And that will take a two thirds vote at town meeting because it's coming from the stabilization fund. Um Article Ten uh pertains to transferring a sum of four hundred and ninety five thousand from sewer enterprise fund retained earnings for the purposes described in the article. Are there any questions on that? If not, can I ask for a motion to recommend adoption of Article Ten?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's a unanimous vote. Article Eleven is a similar article, moving three hundred and twenty thousand from water enterprise fund retained earnings for the uh items identified in the article. Are there any questions?
Uh, just one comment, it's the last thing on this. If you look through all three articles, you'll see something in there. It's asphalt curb machine, uh ask questions to the town manager and the finance committee. That's to do a number of repairs and to put some, also to install some sections. But um part of the discussions that's been going on through the town and through a number of the residents is that going forward, I believe we're gonna be installing granite curving when we're doing sidewalk on on it. So a lot of sections, I know we've put uh new sidewalks in and we've put asphalt curbing, which have been beat up quite a bit. So this is to repair some of those sections. But going forward, hopefully we will not need to keep buying all these. Because we'll have something with granite curving, which will last a little bit longer.
And this and this will allow us to put berms in to help with drainage also.
Yeah.
Right now, we use a concrete machine.
Yep.
All right. Good clarification, are there any, is there a recommendation or um a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So Article Twelve would raise and appropriate five hundred and five thousand from the stormwater enterprise fund for the two purposes identified in the article. Are there any questions on that? If not, uh is there a motion to recommend adoption?
Recommend adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be unanimous. Article Thirteen transfers a sum of two hundred thousand from cable enterprise fund retained earnings. Um and this is gonna be used to upgrade the studio located at Tuxbury Memorial High School. Any questions on that? And if not, is there a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, do we have a second?
Second.
Don't hesitate, Mr. Holland, no worries. Thank you. So uh motion made and seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well on that. And that kinda echoes Mr. Kravman's comments about the good use of the enterprise funds for communication purposes. This is another good expenditure. Article Fourteen um is a vote to authorize the town to borrow two point one million dollars for the cost to install or replace water lines in town, a very high priority on the part of this board. Are there questions on this? And if not, is there a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Kravman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote aye to make that unanimous. Article Fifteen uh transfers from bond premiums, the sum of forty thousand six hundred and forty four dollars to reduce town exempt debt principal. Any questions on that? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Wellman uh makes a motion to recommend adoption, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Article Sixteen, um the article um uses or requests appropriation of four hundred and fifty five thousand from the community preservation fund to install new lights, poles, and associated electrical work at Obden's Baseball Field on Livingston Street. Any questions?
I have one question.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Kravman, you go first.
Okay, so uh Mr. Town Manager, I know this is a pretty large sum for putting lights, but um I believe this is the last field that we have lights at. All the other lights, all the other fields have been lit, so.
Correct.
This is the last large expenditure that we have planned.
So this is the last uh down at Livingston, the last um softball or baseball field that we'll be doing. We did the football field also, so unless, I I can't think of any other requests. I I don't wanna say.
I guess there's never a lot.
Yeah, that the if case lacrosse comes in and says they want lights, but and then I'm not sure. But this is down at Livingston now, whether the high school needs lights for one of their fields.
Now, I know the lights that we purchased, like the street lighting and other things that we purchased, we're able to control the lighting and other things in the density of what's going on. Do we have the same ability with these lights that are going on out there? Do we? I just I'm just wondering if we, I mean, not that I don't think there's many residents around there, but if we do get some complaints about, you know, how the lighting that goes on.
So we'll make sure that the lighting is similar to what we've done at the elementary school and the other fields where they're pointed down and they're not gonna have a spread of of the illumination. So we'll have control that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, I'm wondering if we should uh recommend this at the beginning of the town meeting when we meet again, because the Conservation Commission.
CP, the Community Preservation.
Hasn't had their input.
Um, Community Preservation Committee, you mean? We can, if you wanna offer a motion to table this till the the meeting on the first.
I would offer a motion to table it until we have the results from that committee.
Is there a committee meeting scheduled before?
There's a committee meeting on Thursday at five o'clock. So if you wanna hold on all the Community Preservation Articles until then.
And Mr. Holland's gonna represent us at that meeting now.
So I'd make a motion for sixteen seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion to table Article sixteen seventeen eighteen nineteen offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey to six thirty P M on May first. Thank you, sir. Any um uh all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, am I, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll record Ms. Wellman as being um a no vote. And that vote will be four in favor, uh one opposed. Okay, Article Twenty establishes the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Allocation Plan, which is a required article um in accordance with the statute cited. Any questions on that? And if not, may I ask for a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. One second, thank you for your patience, just need to make a note. Okay, um Article Twenty One um is a Community Preservation Committee article again, which would establish their annual um allocations that they're required to do. Since the committee's meeting later this week, do you wanna follow the same pattern, Mr. Holland?
Well, I think this is a budget issue, this isn't any money coming out.
That's correct, just an allocation. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll certainly entertain any motions members wish to make.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Recommend adoption.
Thank you, okay, so I have a motion made by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman to recommend adoption of Article Twenty One. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Article Twenty Two authorizes the town to establish a new self-sufficient revolving fund to account for revenues and expenditures of the operations and maintenance of the Tuxbury Community Market. Are there any questions on that?
That's a good idea.
If not, may I ask for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey to recommend adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Article Twenty Three um will uh allow the select board to accept or grant easements in conjunction with D P W projects. Um and that is something I think we started last year.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago. Um and it's to help us through the process um and avoid delays since we only meet a couple of times a year at town meeting.
Recommend adoption.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Wellman, who made the motion, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. Article Twenty Four, um if approved, would eliminate secret ballots as the required method of voting at town meeting for personnel bylaw articles. Are there questions on that? If not, the chair will ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion to adopt Article Twenty Four, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Holland, is there a second? In the interest of expediency, the chair will offer a second. So Mr. Holland offers a motion to recommend adoption, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, um let me just for clarity's sake um do a roll call. Mr. Holland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Nay.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Kravman?
No.
And I will vote in the affirmative. So that would be a three to two vote in favor of recommending adoption of Article Twenty Four. Article Twenty Five um would allow or authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive ministerial corrections to the town's general and zoning bylaws to ensure consistent and appropriate sequencing and numbering. Any questions on that article?
Motion to recommend adoption.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion to recommend adoption by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kravman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. That brings us to Article Twenty Six. Um and this would seek a home rule petition through the state legislature to allow the town to exempt the town of Tuxbury from chapter thirty one of the general laws concerning the recruiting and hiring for the position of permanent full-time police officer. Are there any questions on that?
Uh, yes, Mr.
Ms. Wellman?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to confirm with the through you with the town manager, this is an effort to exempt the town from civil service requirements?
Only.
Can you just give us a little color?
Yeah, so this is um this is just for the hiring, the hiring process. So this will allow us to have our own hiring process and not the normal take a test, get on a list. We have to call for the list, can only call for somebody. This will allow us to have our own hiring process. The process will still give uh preference to veterans and residents. And once the person's hired, they will be in civil service. This is just to allow us to structure our own hiring process.
I appreciate that clarification.
The other option was to get out of civil service, which is never easy. This will keep all civil service, you know, requirements for once you're hired and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recommend adoption of Article Twenty Six.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote in the affirmative, that's a five zero vote. Um that brings us to Article Twenty Seven, that was referenced earlier this evening. Um and this would authorize the town to accept access easements on Poland Avenue and uh other actions relative to the center line. I won't read the entire executive summary. You heard reference to this earlier this evening. I think the key is it's authorizing the town to take action, not actually taking the action.
Correct.
Are there questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question.
Ms. Wellman?
Mr. Through you to the manager, in light of some of the conversation we heard tonight, do we have enough information to make this determination? It seems to me like there's some holes. For this piece is a little bit different, I know we've talked about it before.
There could be. Depending on who you're listening to.
Yeah, it was gonna be my motion.
Yeah, table to Monday, table to the beginning of the meeting on Monday.
To Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this article until Monday, May first.
Six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion is offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey to table Article Twenty Seven to May first at six thirty P M. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. All right, we already took action to table Article Twenty Eight and Article Twenty Nine to five one at six thirty. That brings us to Article Thirty. I will add, this is a privately sponsored article. And with that, I will ask if there's any action the board wishes to take.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for indefinite postponement.
Okay, do we have?
To recommend indefinite postponement.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland to recommend indefinite postponement. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, is that a unanimous vote? I just wanna make sure.
I'm abstaining from that one.
One abstention? Four yes, one abstain for the purposes of our minutes. And the abstention was Mr. Mackey. Okay, we already covered the consent calendar. So this brings us to Article Thirty Five. These are all zoning articles. Um and I will just ask if the board has any um intention or wish to take action on these or to um defer to the planning board on Article Thirty Five.
I'll make a motion to defer to the planning board.
Second.
Okay, motion offered um and by Mr. Kravman, seconded by Ms. Wellman to defer to the planning board. All those in favor of that action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Um and then Article, excuse me, Thirty Six is um another zoning article which would allow for um a specific type of conversion of commercial space to affordable residential use.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend adoption of Article Thirty Six. Is there a second on that article? On that motion, rather? All right, as a courtesy to my colleague, I will second that motion. And I will now call for a vote on the motion to recommend adoption of Article Thirty Six. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Okay, just for confirmation for the chair, is that three votes in the negative or two? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm having trouble hearing on my left. Uh, Mr. Mackey, have you voted?
Uh, I I'm I'm voting in the affirmative. I do have a question, though, did we use different verbiage for for this one than we have for previous ones?
What do you mean?
What verbiage?
Did we use, have we been using recommend for adoption?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's late, it's late.
Listen, I I had a.
So the night's getting long.
To to my colleagues, I I made a motion to recommend adoption as a supportive motion to the to the planning board meant to be in in support to the public. Meant to be in, in support to the public versus just deferring to the planning board. It's not meant to usurp the planning board, but to support the planning board.
Understood, yeah, but the, the verbiage was what threw me off for a second, thank you.
Recommending adoption.
Correct.
All right, so just for clarity's sake, are you voting in favor?
Correct.
So that would be three votes in favor, two opposed. Do I have that correct? And just for our recording secretary, the no votes are Mr. Kratman, Mr. Holland. Okay, Article thirty-seven is a privately sponsored article. Does the board have any preference on action on this article? And just, I guess I will offer the comment that we've taken action to table a number of articles thus far this evening. I know that there's some clarity questions that are still outstanding around this article. It might be wise to table this to Monday evening.
Uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey to table Article thirty-seven to six thirty P M. on May first. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one is tabled by a five to zero vote. Turning now to the special town meeting warrant, which will, the town meeting will take place at seven P M. on May third, that's Wednesday, May third. There are just a handful of articles. I want to thank my colleagues for their patience. Article one is a article that transfers funds from accounts with a projected surplus to accounts with a projected deficit for the purposes stated. Let me ask if there are any questions of the town manager on any of the allocations needed. And if not, the total sum moving around is seven hundred eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Is there a motion to recommend adoption?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, Mr., through you to the town manager, Mr. Montori, can you just speak a little bit to the police salaries over time? Budget shortfall?
Yeah, that's, that's covering shifts, and this is based on vacancies we have that aren't filled yet. Again, the civil service process is lengthy. Also, anybody that's, you know, have been out injured, so just filling shifts.
And we have some hiring in the process, it takes time and so forth, that's.
We are, yeah.
Okay, I just, I wanted to call that out because I know folks have questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I would recommend adoption of Article one.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, for the record, it's a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be unanimous. Article two will transfer six hundred thousand from our free cash certified as of July one, twenty twenty-two, to the snow and ice budget. And this is something we have implemented as part of our fiscal policies for a number of years. Are there any questions about this? If not, is there a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
If a motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will make that unanimous. Article three allows the town to utilize funds from water retained earnings for capital, equipment, and improvements. There are two items listed, water treatment plant upgrades to repair filter beds and the Astle Street tank maintenance and upgrades totaling one million two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Are there any specific questions on this article? If not, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made to recommend adoption by Mr. Holland, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. The next three articles are all kind of interrelated here. The first one, Article four, allows the town to establish a special purpose opioid settlement stabilization fund. Mr. Montori, do you want to just speak really quickly on this, this article?
Yep, all right, thank you. So as many of you know, the town was part of a class action lawsuit in regard to opioids. And the nationwide opioid class action lawsuit was settled. The town, like other communities in Massachusetts and around the country, is receiving money through that settlement over a period of years. The total amount that we're going to receive is five hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And again, that'll be in payments over a number of years. There was never a mechanism set up by the Department of Revenue or the state on how the funds would be accounted for when they come into the town and if the town could just spend them as a, as a, as a, as a, without appropriation. So the recommended approach has been, create a opioid stable, a special stabilization fund, which Article four does. Then transfer the amount that we've received so far from the settlement that actually was considered free cash and certified over the past few months in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents to transfer from right now being in the general fund into the stabilization fund. And then to transfer the money out of the stabilization fund to be used in accordance with the purposes of, of the settlement and Department of Revenue requirements. And the, the thought now, the thought has been in meetings with the police, fire, Department of Health, and, and we'll be meeting the school department, is to use those funds for, to support, you know, treatment, promote, treatment, to support and promote treatment and recovery with individuals that are connected with opioid, that are in opioid recovery to take part in harm reduction, use the funds for harm reduction to prevent overdoses and deaths, to provide wraparound services, and again, education services to prevent opioid misuse. And then general support of services and programs to individuals and families within the community, so. It'll encompass all of those, and, and again, it'll be used by the police, fire, health department, school department, and our frontline initiative group.
So a lot of hoops to jump through to keep in compliance.
Correct, and I think there's legislation pending that will make this easier in the future, but in order to use the funds that we currently have, we need to do this.
All right, so I just have one quick question for you. When the funds, the initial one hundred and eleven thousand came in, does that come directly from the litigants or does it flow through the attorney generals?
Flow through the state, yeah, through the attorney, the Attorney General Act on behalf.
The funds for all communities and distribute it?
And then distributed them, yes. And we expect more funds coming in because they recently settled with all the pharmacies that, such as C V S, Walgreens, Walmart. So there'll be more funds coming in.
All right, are there any other questions?
I, I just have one quick question. Um, I know surrounding communities as well as Tuxbury has a very large problem looming with homelessness. And it was, it's coming all around us, and I know none of the cities and towns around us have a program where they work with the homeless and get them into programs, and a lot of it is drug related. Gets, and you need the programs in place. You can't just move somebody off because they'll just move to another place. You need to get them into programs, you need to get them help, you need to get them off the street. Is this what this is, would be useful, would the?
It could be, and we have a good, um, list of homeless individuals in the communities, and we're constantly monitoring that. And that would go to the wraparound services part of the use of the funds that we could help.
All right, thank you.
All right, so Article four, it will require a two-thirds vote to establish the stabilization fund at town meeting. If there's no further questions, is there a recommendation or a motion to recommend adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll make that unanimous. And then Article five, as the town manager indicated, will then, if Article four is successful, will transfer one hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents that currently is in the general fund to the opioid settlement stabilization fund. Is there a motion to recommend adoption of that article?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that would be unanimous. And then Article six would then, as was described by the town manager, take that same sum of money and it will allow for the expenditure of the opioid settlement funds.
So, recommend adoption.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to recommend adoption by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We can all now take a deep breath. We've accomplished the town meeting and special town meeting warrants. And we are in the home stretch of our agenda with five more minutes of your time. Mr. Montori, is there anything under Town Manager's report you want to speak to?
No, I just have the town council invoices.
Okay, you want to talk to those right now?
Yes, there are two invoices to approve tonight. The first is from March first to March fifteenth in the amount of four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and I would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of town council invoice, March one through March fifteen, twenty, twenty-three, in the amount of four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have four in favor, and Mr. Holland is abstaining for the record. And that brings us to the second one.
And the second is from March sixteen through March thirty-first in the amount of four thousand eighty dollars, and I would recommend approval.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey to approve.
Town council.
Town council.
Town council's voice.
I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for the help on that. We have four in favor and one abstention by Mr. Holland. Okay, that brings us to minutes. We have minutes from March seven. Who's the clerk on this?
Mr. Kratman.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have minutes from March seventh and March twenty-first.
Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation to approve the minutes?
All right, super, thank you. All right, we have a recommendation to approve by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor of approval on March seven and March twenty-one minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, that's a four votes in favor and one abstention by Mr. Holland. Okay, that brings us to board member reports. Mr. Holland, do you have anything?
I have one thing. Unfortunately, the computer's not up because I can't get online here. The letter that we received from the gentleman in Wilmington commending our D P W workers. I don't know their names, but I do want to recognize them, and I've asked Mr. Montori, is, and can we put something together to show our appreciation? I mean, I understand the police and fire have their medal of valor, they do a great job, you know? But these guys are the unsung heroes, and I think they should be acknowledged.
Very good.
If you want, Mr. Chairman, I can draft a letter to each of the individuals that were recognized for the board to sign. And I'll leave them upstairs, and if she signs them, we'll make sure they get in their files.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Holland. Ms. Wellman?
We already had a comment from our beautification committee about cleanup day on May sixth. I wanted to recognize a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate Al Mancini and Susan Young for the designation of Tree City, for Tuxbury being a Tree City. I know that they have worked hard with staff to make that happen, and I appreciate all of their dedicated work toward that end. I also want to note that this Saturday at eleven A M. at the Bunting Club is the second annual cornhole tournament in memory of Megan McCarthy for folks who may want to join that. And then on Wednesday, there is a poetry reading with an open mic to honor National Library Week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report.
Thank you for that. Mr. Kratman?
I'll save my comments for the next meeting. My L R T A meeting is scheduled for this Thursday. But I would like to make notice that, and have the town manager once again post out, our meeting is scheduled for Monday and Wednesday. There was something that was posted out by one of our state delegation. Obviously, they made a mistake because of the other communities, so they posted something out that's saying that our town meeting is on Saturday and Monday. I just want to make sure anybody that got that, it's, we don't have our meetings on Saturdays, obviously. The residents understand that. But our meetings are scheduled on Monday and Wednesday. Anybody that may have received that.
Thank you for that. All right, and I'll just end with some comments about our police department. I, I know we all saw communication. I believe there were four or five officers who were recognized for outstanding service. And I, I want to kind of piggyback on Mr. Holland's commentary. They, they deserve a lot of recognition. And I want to, on behalf of the board and myself personally, thank those officers for their, for their service and for their commendable actions that they, they each took. And then the other thing that I think is very important, and we haven't really talked a lot about it here, but the police department prepared and has prepared for quite some time, I think a matter of a number of years to achieve an accreditation that is not easy to do. And they seem to have tackled that project and effort with a lot of diligence and I believe hopefully will get us across the finish line. I don't know, do you have an update on that, Mr. Montori?
So they've passed through the assessment process, and now they're going to move on to accreditation, so they're, they're almost there, and they've done a terrific job.
Yeah. So that is, not many communities get to that level, and it's something that is a testament to the dedication of the force that has grown and has faced enormous challenges over the last few years, so in addition to serving us all well each and every day, twenty-four seven, they also have managed to accomplish what hopefully, knock on wood, will be a successful accreditation, and that's to their credit. So kudos to the leadership and the force in its entirety for that effort. So I have no other comments. With that, let me ask if there's a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now adjourned. We will regroup on May first, next Monday at six thirty at Tuxbury Memorial High School.